This was for your purpose, Mrs. Rem. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education. Today is May 12th, 2015, and I'm calling to order the meeting, and we will start with the recognitions.
Great. It is a favorite time of the year, these last couple board meetings, we have an opportunity to recognize a lot of the work of our staff and students, and we certainly have that opportunity tonight. So the first individual we're going to recognize is one of our elementary school art teachers, Dan Rosenthal. And we're very proud of his most recent accomplishment, and Cindy is here to give us a little background and talk through. Dan is in his second year, right, at Terriffill School, and is really creating magic for the school community over there, so thank you.
Magic is a wonderful word, Mr. Curtis. So this is my distinguished colleague.
You get to stand up, Dan.
Stand in front of the board. This is Dan Rosenthal Baxter, my wonderful colleague, who has just received the distinction as our state elementary art educator of the year, as awarded by our professional organization, the Connecticut Art Education Association. Dan was toasted, and a lovely dinner, and a beautiful, beautiful merino glass award at a banquet earlier in the month. And the executive board, who actually, they nominated Dan. There's a lot of players standing in here, have these words to say about him. Dan Rosenthal Baxter grew up in West Hartford, and still has the clay bear he made in third grade. The bear's name is Jared. Since third grade, Mr. Rosenthal Baxter has been nationally as a potter and a painter, much to surprise his parents and their delight. Dan now lives in West Hartford with his husband of many years, Lawrence Baxter, their three charming, distinctive teenagers, each of whose names he gave with the letter A. In addition to making art, Dan's favorite things included trips to Disney World, reading, learning new things, talking about his three children, Smurfs, expounding on the virtues of education, talking some more about his three children, and of course figuring out new and fun ways to use the world's best, most flexible, most challenging, most supportive, and most engaging teaching tool of all time, capital A, art. Dan has taught in several elementary schools in West Hartford, and is currently our art teacher at the Terriffill School. With his sensitive and caring approach, he shares his level of art, follows his students, Dan's creative teaching style, and his strong determination to see all children succeed are some of the tools he uses to reach all his targets. In addition to his teaching responsibilities, Dan has also dedicated much, much time and support to the activities of the CAEA. He has attended conferences, meetings, facilitated a regional workshop, and volunteered to serve on many exhibition happenings. So Dan, congratulations, on behalf of everybody. We are so glad you've brought us now.
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Dan, one thing I'll say is, you know, if you go to Terriffill School and visit Dan's room with the kids, we talk a lot as educators about the importance of engaging students in learning experience. And you're a perfect example of that, you really are. The kids are always on the edge of their seat, they're in the work, and it's great to see. So thank you very much for what you've brought to our district.
Thank you. Absolute pleasure.
All right, Cindy, we're going to keep it rolling with you.
Oh, let's do that.
All right. So I know we have, we have a PowerPoint, I know that you have kind of put together that's going to demonstrate some of the Scholastic Art Awards, and I know we have a special student here, Sean, this evening.
He's going to join me. Sean, come on up, Mrs. Rem. Oh, yeah, right now. I know it is. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I know that, but I want Sean to be able to just pipe right in about Scholastic Art Awards, and hope he'll tell you a little bit about what this experience has meant to him. But this year, 17 students received Scholastic Art Awards. It's our most distinguished opportunity for student exhibition. It emulates a real art show where our students are juried in. So regionally in the state, there were 3,000 submissions, of which 600 pieces were accepted. So they're beautiful, beautiful pieces. Here is, it's kind of rolling, I want you to kind of enjoy it for a minute. Please notice the diversity of materials, techniques, and processes, the representation of all of our art teachers, every single art teacher received recognition. Again, the Simsbury Arts Academy received recognition, fashion design, as you know, just so, so popular. Photography, such a popular course, so expressive. These are advanced placement students. This student has a way of swinging lights around, which she demonstrated at the Innovation Day, to produce her portfolio of what she calls, I believe she calls them light paintings. Another advanced placement student. We're going to just roll through you one more time. Sean, we want to bring the board's attention to one piece. Yeah, this is Sean. Well, anyway. Yeah, Sean, why don't you speak to your pieces right now, in your own...
Right on the spot, right?
Oh, my God.
That is a drawing of my friend driving a car. Other than, we had an hour car ride back home from the heat break. So, and he, his radio and AC were broken.
You did that in an hour?
Yeah, one hundred. Like, it got really dark at some point, and we wanted to go to Taco Bell. All the, disregard all the titles, because I put those in as a way to mess with the Scholastic Awards. I figured that I'd write a very esoteric artist statement involving me talking to the universe in several forms. And then I wrote really esoteric names, such as juxtaposition of the troubled mind, and obviously, the person's standing in front of a bunch of cartoon characters, made Soviet hero references in the rocket.
So you're playing with them.
Been mine entire career.
Where are you going next year?
School of Arts in New York City.
Fabulous.
So, so that was, this was just the beginning of Sean's opportunity to receive Scholastic Art Award. He has just received news that he received a national gold award. 300,000 works of art were juried, international, by slide, and 10% of the students received levels of recognition. Sean received the highest level of recognition. And he and his family, and Mrs. Seattle, his teacher, will be traveling to New York City on June 11th, to Carnegie Hall, where it will be presented and recognized.
How do you feel about that?
It's an excuse for being narcissistic.
I think you should introduce your mother, and any other guests you may have brought.
My mother and my father.
Yes.
Welcome.
Great, welcome, welcome.
Congratulations on your success.
Very, very good.
Congratulations.
Keep it up, Sean.
All right, we have one final recognition this evening, and that is our Arts Advocate Award, and I have Angela here with Eileen Eustace.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us this evening, and it is my pleasure to announce Eileen Eustace as the Simsbury Connecticut Arts Administrators Association Advocate for 2015. Each year, the Connecticut Arts Administrators Association selects an advocate who best embodies supporting the arts in their, in our district, someone who is a strong advocate, who's supportive of the students, the teachers, the community, and the work that's going on. This year in particular, I felt it was really important to be as thoughtful as possible. Simsbury received this year the Best Communities in Music Education Award, one of them, one of the best communities for music education in the country. And a part of that has to do with the community, as well as the administration, everyone coming together to support the arts in our district. And Eileen has done that through time, and so her experience is a little bit different because both from being an administrator and from being a parent from that perspective. So I have something that I would like to read. She will be recognized at the Arts Administrators' banquet this week, and I thought I'd like to take the opportunity to read a little bit about what she's meant to us. Eileen Eustace has been a longstanding advocate of the Simsbury Music and Performing Arts Department as both the building administrator and as a parent. She has advocated for the music department both in terms of scheduling, quality of programming, and flexibility, and thinking creatively about providing the best musical opportunities for students and teachers. Mrs. Eustace works closely with the Simsbury High School Music Department in terms of recognizing the unique needs of the program, and in recognition of the hard work and efforts of the music and theater teachers in our district. As a parent of a former student, she has volunteered her time willingly alongside other parents in order to support students during the high school musical, and to contribute her thoughts and ideas related to major changes in our ticketing and house procedures. That's very important. One of the most successful musicals ever performed at Simsbury High School, and in case you remember, her daughter played posset in Lady Sarah beautifully. Mrs. Eustace is always willing to support the advantages gained by student participation in music and the Simsbury Music and Performing Arts KFO program, and she has invested herself generously on a personal and professional level. It is my distinct pleasure to recognize Mrs. Eustace as the Simsbury Connecticut Arts Administrator's Advocate for 2015. She will be formally recognized by the Connecticut Arts Administrators Association this week, where she will receive a certificate for her outstanding contributions as an avid supporter of the arts. We are very fortunate to have someone who supports us this way. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Very good. You know, we, Sean, we'd much rather see the rest of your, you know, film here, the rest of your things during this meeting. We do find that very interesting. Very good, so great. Congratulations to both of yours. So, it's quite, quite an honor. All right, moving forward, we have public audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to address? Yes, you may be excused.
Have a great evening.
Welcome you to stay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on all your awards.
We're sticking around.
Thank you.
The usual is back here.
You don't really have a choice.
It's always a good show.
That's good. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to board and administrative communications. All right, Ms. Mallory, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, everyone is very busy at the high school. AP exams wrap up this week, and S-Back testing will start next week. Many sports teams are doing incredibly well this spring, and they're currently in their last couple weeks of games. And this past Saturday, the Greater Hartford Invitational Track Meet was held at the high school, and it was a packed day. There were over 1,000 athletes from 44 teams, and Simsbury placed very well. The girls finished first overall, and the boys placed fourth. So congratulations to everyone. And lastly, this upcoming Saturday is junior prom, which will be held at the high school.
Very exciting. Susan?
I'm going to take a minute to update you on what the leadership team has been up to with the high school this year. So we are, we've been working on a new GPA, so a system that will begin with next year's freshmen, so the class of 2019, not affecting anybody already in the high school. That's an important point to remember. But we are going to have a much bigger overview at the June 9th meeting. Roughly stated, the three reasons we're looking at this is, we have so many more kids taking AP exams right now, so there was a need to review how we handle honors versus AP grading. And there was, there is biology and chemistry now have an honors level, so we want to address the difference between honors level grades, AP grades, level two, right across the board. And with the elimination of everything but math for level three, it was a good time for us to take a look at the whole practice that we have in place. So the important note is, we're still on a 4-0 scale. One of the changes that benefit, the changes benefit everybody, but one of the things that I particularly lock onto is, level three kids have the opportunity to achieve a 4-0, as AP kids can achieve a 5-0. So we've kind of run the gamut, and everybody is equally addressed through these changes. And I think that's important to remember. It acknowledges the rigorous difference between honors and AP, because there, you know, we all have had kids go through that. There are certainly differences between the two. And it gives, it better reflects how AP and level two courses compare with level one and level two. So I think it's, I think we're, overall, we're in a very good position to bring this forward at this time and share this with everybody. Anything else? Todd and Tara also?
I mean, this leadership committee is, it's, it's a, it's a great cross-section of teachers, administrators, parents, students, and nobody holds back what they really think. So it's, you get really candid discussions on, on these issues, and things really get thought out. And it's not just one meeting, it's, you know, of course, several meetings. So this, this, really, you end up with a, with a good quality product. And last night, people felt positive about what, what the end result was.
All right, we've been working on this since November?
October, November, yeah.
October, November, as a group. And some of our best ideas come from the students on the committee, truly, because they're the ones in the thick of it, and they have the most impact from what we do. So it was very fleshed out, and Student Council is one of the key people who brought it to the attention of administration, saying, "This is something we'd like you to look at." So this is not parent-driven, it's not faculty-driven, this is student-driven. Everybody kind of came together around the same issue, which I think is an important note as well.
So at the June 9th, board meeting, Neil will be here with some other folks to talk about the NEAS process, but we'll also give you an overview of the difference in the GPA system at that point.
Okay. It's been some time since we've evaluated and viewed that, hasn't it?
2006.
2006, okay.
Correct.
So we're just going back some time.
We had left that 20-point...
Yes.
Yes. And so it's worked, but it's been, you know, quite some time. So it was really, as Susan said, a very thoughtful, and Todd said, a very thoughtful committee led by Neil, and I think got to a good place that will address the needs of our students, both at the low end and at the high end, and everybody in between. So we'll bring that forward with more detail on June 9th.
All right, looking forward to hearing that. So it's great you're getting positive feedback from, from the committee. Very good. Tom?
Nothing else.
Thank you. Mikey?
What's up?
Tara?
All the elementary schools were doing their bike walk and ride school this week. That was really fun to see, and very helpful. And Henry James is doing all their concerts. So there's a lot going on in all of our schools, I think, this, as we wind up, wind down. What was it, Matt? Wind down.
We wind.
It's all going. So it's exciting stuff.
And yours truly did walk the squadron. So, nice day.
Very nice.
It was, it was great, huffing and puffing, but I got there.
So just to let the board know, we had our third meeting of our Simsbury Assessment Think Tank today. Elementary folks came this morning, secondary in the afternoon. We've accomplished what we set out to do in our three meetings, to really begin to, we did a survey, we took inventory of our assessments, and today was really at the point where we began to make some recommendations of what we needed to reduce, revise, eliminate. So I've got a stack of information. It was a long day, but I think we'll have some good recommendations that will come out of this. And please remember that this is not something. We received this grant in late February, so really from March through now. And this is the beginning of a multi-year process, and I think we've, we're, we've really started out with some good information. So that was today. And secondly, just a reminder that May 22nd will be an early release day. It will be a teacher professional development day for three hours, and that will be departmental-based and grade level-based at the elementary level. And our K-12 folks will have their, their people during that time. So.
All right, good.
All right.
Great. Two terrific pieces of news to share from the music department. First, last week was the CMEA, Connecticut Music Educators Association State Level Conference. And we have a lot of participation from Simsbury. Colleen Thompson, who is our choral teacher at the high school, she was actually presenting a course, a class, at that conference, and she was also facilitating our Simsbury Singers, who participated in that conference. In addition, our elementary orchestra and our elementary chorus also performed at the, the state level conference. So just a lot of Simsbury representation there on the state level. We continue to be proud of that. Continuing with that, Fantastic Festivals is a middle school adjudication that we participate in, and the Henry James Chorus brought home the platinum for their efforts, which is, of course, the highest award that you can achieve. So wanted to give a couple of bits of information for you, and just, again, reinforces the incredible work that we do in our fine and performing arts here in Simsbury.
The Henry James Choir will be performing tomorrow night at Simsbury High School at 6:45. If you want to see some of those kids and their performances.
Great. Always good news to hear when these kids come back with these awards. It's really, it's wonderful. It's just great. Keep it going. Burke?
Just, just quickly, thanks to all the voters who voted, and the fact that all of our budgets successfully passed, and there was not as much activity at the middle school as, as the concert that evening in terms of voting, but it was one of the shorter meetings I've, I've been to after the referendum. But it was all positive, so thank you very much.
All righty.
I wanted to pass along my thanks as well. You know, we sit back at this time of the year, our cabinet group, and kind of debrief the budget process, think about things we can do differently for next year in terms of presentation and sequence. But overall, feel really good about how this budget played out in terms of what we're providing our students, our staff, in doing it in a really cost-effective manner. So I know it's a lot of work, it's a lot of, quite a bit of time, so I wanted to thank everybody at the, at the table for your efforts. On another front, Sue and I visited today Squadron Line Preschool for a little presentation of Chicka Chicka Boom Boom. And it was adorable. I mean, it, you know, it's where it all starts, right? And it was the, the attendance of the parents and the grandparents, and the little voices presenting was just priceless. And it couldn't have been better timing, I think, in the busyness of it all at this time of the year to say, wow, this is where it, where it all starts for our kids in terms of our programming and our opportunities. So I just wanted to pass along that. It was really, it was, it was a lot of fun.
Sheer joy on their faces.
Oh, that's great. Now, more importantly, did you sit on one of the colored mats?
I didn't, standing in the back. Standing room only.
All right, great. It just, for me, just briefly, and, and it won't take a lot of time, because it could take a lot of time, but you all should be receiving the CAE advocacy highlights. I know the students also are interested in that, and I have your copies here. But as we're winding down, with just a couple more weeks to go within the legislature, you know, about, less than like 20 bills were passed in the Senate and the House, starting with about 300. So, so that was really quite, quite a feat. But again, you know, it's not over until, until June, June 6th, so, so stay tuned. There may be some more changes coming down the pike with, with some of these. These are all in your emails under the CAE advocacy highlights, because some of them will take effect July 2015, and some will be taking effect in October. So none of these here really are that much that will really affect us, as it is some of the Alliance districts, some of the other urban districts in, in some of these areas. But it's still, it's still worth to, to see what is going to be affecting the educational landscape across the state coming two months. So, so that's where we are with that, and we'll let you know. We have a legislative wrap-up in June from CAE, so that'll be the, the final, finale for the, for the year. So let's hope that, you know, they're done in, in June, as they say, and we can move forward. All right, that's it. We'll move on to recommended actions. Exhibit one, the minutes of the regular meeting of April 28th. Do I hear a motion?
I move. Accept the minutes.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mikey? All right, thank you. Moving on to exhibit two, adoption of healthy food and beverage for 2015, 2016. And that is Burke.
Okay. Well, we've seen this annual certification, many of you, for, for quite some time since the Connecticut Act was passed in 2006. And we get reimbursed 10 cents per meal served. This past year, our reimbursement was almost $22,000. In the upcoming year, it just has to be certified on an annual basis, there is a, a unique situation, which is that the governor's proposed 1516 budget eliminated the funding for this program. And as recently as, as the 4th of May, the Appropriations Committee budget did in fact show that they, they support restoring it. So because of the timeframe that this has to be done and sent to the state by July 1st, we're still requesting that you move forward to approve one more year in this program. Ultimately, Connecticut has stricter standards than the federal standards that went into effect July 1st, 2014. And so for now, we're going to move, move forward with the assumption that we'd be eligible for just under 21,000 in reimbursement for next year, assuming that this budget does pass with this restored. Are there any other questions or comments about what we're being asked to do tonight?
So Burke, so what was in our budget, or was the $20,000 or $22,000 included?
Because our operating budget only supports, you know, less than $9,000, $8,000 for just a portion of the salary of the director, from an operating budget point of view, there's really no assumption that would change because of this. As a, as a separate fund, the cafeteria fund gets federal reimbursement for free and reduced lunch program, and then this state program also supplements that. So it would be a loss of revenue, and it is something that we'll have to, you know, come back with and determine if there's any, if there's any changes that would be made. But as I, as I mentioned earlier, now that the federal Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act has now started to mirror some of these standards, it's not like suddenly you'd say, well, now we, you know, now we could change our, our menu drastically, and that would save us, you know, save us tons of money. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not clear yet. You know, once this budget is known, we'll come back and we'll have to evaluate if, if in fact we've lost this revenue, how we'd attempt to make it up. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up, because on the federal level, with the, with the big, the big buzz in NDC is the, that act, the Healthy Hunger Kids Act. So that is something that has taken a lot of legs this year, that a lot of legislators are getting, getting a lot of pushback, you know, from, from a lot of boards and superintendents and legislators in the states, because that will affect, you know, if, if this passes and goes through, it will affect, to help the districts around the country that have been pushing for this for quite some time. So that's yet to be seen too. So we'll see. All right. What is our percentage of free and reduced lunch?
We're about eight and a half or so.
Okay. So, all right. I know you've given before in testimony, it was, it does come into play. So it is...
It has, it has increased.
Has increased.
On a...
And it has increased.
Over about a 10-year period.
Yes.
But our numbers are still nowhere near some other communities.
No, no, but it is increasing. It is, it is increasing in, in the district like Simsbury. So there's also something to, to work, to think about as we work forward.
I make a motion, we adopt the healthy food and beverage as, as Burke has stated it.
Would you like to read that motion? Just, I know it's long, but...
The whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Want to ask another question?
Move that pursuant to Section 3 of Public Act 0663, the Simsbury Board of Education hereby certifies that all food and beverage items offered for sale to students in the schools under our jurisdiction and not exempted from the nutritional standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education on August 1st, 2006, will meet said, said standards. Such certification will include food and beverage not exempted from said nutrition standards offered for sale to students at all times in all schools and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises, whether or not school-sponsored. Excluded from this certification is food and beverage that is sold at events after the end of the regular school day or on weekends, and not sold from a vending machine or school store.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any tensions? All right, that motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're on to exhibit three, school climate plan update.
All right, that's Mr. [inaudible].
Great. So I always love coming before the board and discussing school climate, because we're very, very proud of our efforts, really founded within the principles of character education and the, and the national standards, but how that lives and breathes every single day in our schools, elementary, middle, and high school. So this evening, what I'd like to do is just reorient the board to what our safe school climate plan is all climate plan is all about and the policy surrounding it, but also to touch upon some of the great work that continues to happen every day. And when we talk about climate, in essence, I think in lay terms, we're really talking about how do people interact with each other, right? How do students and students interact? What do those adult students, student-adult interactions look like, and adult-adult interactions at the end of the day? And it's something that you can feel right when you walk into a building, but not compromising each school's unique programs that they have in place, and how that manifests itself in those interactions. So again, to orient you to our policy, and to give you some examples of what do individual school climate plans look like, what kinds of things are involved in them, and then discuss kind of next steps moving forward. Okay? So, just as a reminder, we call it the Safe School Climate Plan, but it's really our district. In a sense, it's really a misnomer, but the state calls it a Safe School Climate Plan. Our policy was adopted in 2011, and that was coming off the heels of some pretty significant changes around school climate legislation. And I'll highlight some of those in just a moment. But what this plan does is really provide a comprehensive approach to school climate, both how do we continue our efforts around enhancing our positive school climates, but it also addresses the other side around bullying, prevention and intervention, and what do we do in those cases as well. So the objectives of our district plan is to define bullying and related definitions, and a lot of these objectives are legislatively mandated. It clarifies the reporting and investigative procedures, responses to verified cases of bullying, talks about how we need to collect data on that. It also delineates our prevention and intervention strategies within the districts and different things that we can do. It talks about our annual notice to families. So, you know, the parents on the board know that each year, certainly through our school handbooks, but other mechanisms, we have to talk about, okay, if you have a concern around bullying in particular, these are the steps that you can take, and this is what we will promise you on our end regarding those investigations. It also delineates administrative responsibilities and requires the development of these individual school plans. So you have, again, the broader umbrella of the district, and then seven individual school plans underneath that broad umbrella. So, the individual school climate plans, and I'm going to hope this link has been a little finicky, so we're going to hope that it works, if not, we have some paper backup. But these plans really identify the responsibilities of the school climate coordinator. Currently, that's me, that responsibility will go to Neil. So again, you hear the misnomer.
Smile. That was a big smile.
You know this is work that I love, that I welcome. So, the school climate coordinator is really a district person, and then the school climate specialists, and by and large, those are your principals. So it delineates their responsibilities, we're going to take a look at that in a second. There's also, by the legislative requirements of 2010, this concept of the school climate committee. So each one of our schools has one of these climate committees, and there is appropriate student representation, faculty and staff representation, as well as parent representation. So it talks about the responsibilities of those committees, and then it outlines, based upon that committee work, actions and measures to address climate in school. And the majority of what we're doing is enhancing already great practices in each one of our schools here in Simsbury. Alright, so this is where we're going to see if it's going to continue to be finicky, but here's an example of Latimer Lane.
Can I open?
No, that's okay. Alright, so here we go. This is Latimer Lane's school climate plan, and please know that each one of these plans is up on our website, and we also share the plans with the state, so that they're aware. But again, you can see, "School Climate Coordinator," there I am, and what my responsibilities are as coordinator, really making sure at the end of the day that the plan is implemented. You may not be able to get this on your netbook, I'm not sure.
I'm on it, yeah.
Oh, great, fantastic. And it's also to meet with the specialists, the principals, minimally twice a year to discuss, hey, are there any trends that are coming up that we need to pay closer attention to? You know, certainly there's individual nuances that we might be seeing in buildings, but as a district, is there anything, you know, that we're seeing?
Like new technologies, or some way that people might be potentially at risk?
Certainly, right? And so we have discussions, and what those turn out to be are, share some strategies. What works for you in these cases? And, you know, this is a place, another example of where administrators are constantly collaborating, that no matter if it's elementary or middle or high school, we're picking up the phone and saying, hey, you know, can you provide me some guidance? What are your thoughts on this? You know, here is where I'm thinking about going with this issue. And that's really wonderful to see as a byproduct of all this. The school climate specialist responsibilities, in this case, Mike Lizetti is principal, really making sure that there, that his individual school climate plan is implemented within fidelity, that he's making sure that there's the appropriate committee, that they're meeting on a regular basis on all of our plans. You can see when the different committees meet throughout the year, and really articulating that, and talking about, okay, what are some issues specific to our school that we need to talk about, and how do we want to address those? And that's where I think the multiple voices around the table are crucial to those discussions, because we're getting student perspectives, faculty perspectives, and parent perspectives. And then finally, in these plans, you can see the actions that the committees devise and delineate, and how they're going to measure success. So, you know, a lot of here you'll see, especially with Latimer Lane, Mike being in his first year as principal, really wanted to look at their character program and get some additional buy-in. He's done some incredible work specifically with his fifth and sixth grade leadership, and talking about what does it mean for these values of respect and responsibility and caring to be alive and well in Latimer Lane's school? And we want to hear from you, from the kids, what makes sense here, and how are we going to acknowledge that? So, it's really a wonderful collective effort at the end of the day. So, I'm going to try to get me back to where we were. Should I shut it down completely, Katie?
No, no. Look out at that. Just close current tab.
Yeah, close the tab. Red, no, red tab. Oh, there's Henry James.
Oh, there's Henry James too. We can, okay, that's fantastic. That was an unexpected. So here's another example. Again, I won't go into the particulars of the plan.
Technology's working too good.
It is. It was an unexpected benefit. But again, so you can see the similarities in the plans, but where it really looks specific to the score are these actions taken? Because again, those are derived from the committee, where do we want to put our focus, and what is that going to look like? How do we know if we've hit our targets? Okay. Latimer Lane again. What do you think, Katie, here?
X.
X, the red X. Okay, fantastic. So that gives you an idea of what the individual school plans look like. And again, wonderful documents, but where this comes alive is in the hallways, in the classrooms, on the bus, on the playground, every single day. So, you've heard the elementary principals, Neil, Brian White, talk about, what does the Trojan Code look like? The HJ Way, knowledge is power at Terrifiller, the Squadron Line's son. And that's really where the characteristics and the qualities and really are made manifest in each of the individual buildings. And we're really happy with those efforts. Does that mean, you know, are we ever satisfied? No, we always want to get better. So, one of the things that we're really looking forward to is certainly the feedback from our surveys, right? So I had shared with you before how we were going to get feedback on our leadership practices, but also our school climate practices. So, there's a requirement that we are to garner this feedback at least once every two years, and this is really important to us. So as we're getting the survey results from Panorama, it's really going to inform, how well are we hitting the mark? And if we're not, what are we going to do about it? What are some next action steps that we are going to take? So we're really anxious and looking forward to getting this feedback and to seeing, is it really alive and well? Is it making its impact with the kids and their responses, and the parents and their responses, and faculty and staff? So, again, all of our plans, they're currently up on the website, they can be accessed at any point. If there are parents, students concerned, have questions about the district plan, of course, they are more than welcome to call me and ask me questions. And then again, we'll continue with our discussions at Administrative Council, formally, minimally, at least twice a year, but they're ongoing conversations around our strategies and our practices. So I don't know if the board has any questions at this point or comments?
Very, this is just a little synopsis of a very comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
You have been working on for the past several years.
And it continues to evolve.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I would just say, Sue, the subcommittee work around communications next year will be so important as we gather the survey information, really look for trends, and then decide on what next steps are in terms of how the work evolves. So I'm really looking forward to that.
Really gives you a snapshot on how the work is living right now.
Is this on the website? This is for parents too? Or any?
This PowerPoint?
Not necessarily this, but just on the school climate on there.
Absolutely. We have a whole section on school climate that, we have all of the board policies listed, but we have some specific resources on school climate. And again, the community can access all of the individual school climate plans, they are listed and right there for access.
Because I know this is still in the community, it's something to embrace, something to understand why this had to be, you know, instilled and had to be established within the state. So this is good, is an ongoing piece of work.
Sue, can you spend a minute? Because I agree, this is really important, and I know you're very passionate about this. Is it important that we, you know, safety in the schools in every way, shape, and form, right? It's one of our primary must-dos. But, I mean, can you give us a sense of any sort of district themes in terms of number of interventions? Is it kind of trending up, trending down? You know, I know a couple, three years ago, you know, online bullying or cyberbullying was something of dramatic focus. I mean, is there anything? Can you give me a sense of, or give us a sense of what you're worried about, or what's going on?
No, absolutely. I think the world of social media, you know, certainly, and I think that's something that we continuously pay attention to. There was, you know, part of the adoption of this policy back in 2011 was regarding some changes around the legislative requirements that expanded what was the responsibility of the school system. And it expanded the definition to require schools to respond to cyberbullying. And I think at first, and I think it continues to be a concern, like, okay, where does our responsibility end? But what you have to do, I think, is take a look at, is the activity, even if it's outside of school, is it impacting the ability for kids to learn during the school day? And if the answer to that question is yes, then we have a duty and an opportunity, I'd like to see it, to respond in that way. So as far as trends, you know, there is, when we get to the definition of bullying, and what we call a verified act of bullying, there are very specific definitions that must fit whatever the action is. So when you talk about our verified number at the end of the year, it's typically very low. What that doesn't represent is the incredible work that our faculty, staff, teachers, administrators are doing every day to look into behavior that really doesn't follow our expectations of the Trojan Code, of the HJ Way, of Children Shining at Squadron Line, of the Latimer Lane Gate. So the numbers are a little, they're, they don't represent all of the great work that's happening, right? So, again, as far as trends and things that we're seeing, certainly social media adds a whole different component that we didn't see certainly when I became an administrator, right? But again, it's building proactively with our students. How do you respond? What does your digital footprint look like? How is something that you say in a Facebook comment any different from something that you might write in a diary? Because you're sharing your diary with the whole world to see, and we have to make sure that we're doing some direct teach with our students around that. And at the end of the day, how hurtful certain actions can be. So, again, these are things that we're all talking about, strategizing about, you know, what has worked for, you know, whether it be a certain class discussion, an assembly, or just working with a student who's struggling with an issue with another. Peer mediation is huge here. So it's very much all-encompassing, but I would say as far as trends, that's something that we continue to look at, because every day, there's a new app, there's a new way in which to increase our social media world, and it's something that we have to pay attention to.
I think one thing that's changed pretty dramatically over the time from when I sat in the seat you sit in now, and when the legislation first came out, we tried to spend a lot of time figuring out what we're responsible for and what we're not. We were just burning energy in the wrong area. You know, I think it's recognizing that we're all partners in this, and the less time we spend on who owns it, and the more time we spend on trying to get to yes, we've really been able to make much more progress in solving problems, because that's what this is about. It's not what label we put on it, it's are we resolving the issue, and is the negative behavior stopping?
That's right.
Because in the end, that's what all the parties can agree upon. So I think that, for me administratively, is the biggest shift I've seen, because when this legislation first came out, with all the layers of definitions, you can really get lost in the weeds when what you're talking about is people, relationships, and behaviors. So, pretty complex, but a really important part of what we do.
Absolutely. At the end of the day, is it impacting what's going on for that student's ability to access the learning in our classrooms?
Are you finding the kids responding to this? Are they coming more freely to whoever it is in their building to say maybe they're having trouble before it's bullying? While it's, are you getting them to respond to you in the way you maybe want them to because of all character development programs? I think, Susan, that that's exactly what the focus on positive school climate allows to happen. Because if you are working from a place where you have open and honest dialogue with students, and they feel like they have minimally one adult that they can go to, they're absolutely accessing adults. And although it may be small, we could hit something at a much lower level and kind of address it than making it bigger. So I think that's where the relationship piece is so absolutely critical, so kids feel like they can, and they do have someone that they can go to, that they can trust, that they can share potentially some confidential information, and know that it's going to be handled in the right way. Okay, thank you. Mallory, you have any comments on our school climate?
I think that it's definitely improving, and just the other day, I took a survey actually in my AP Psychology class about the Trojan Code, and I thought it was really good, it covered a lot of topics, and it left room for comments, which I thought was important, and like the scales were very specific to each question, which helped get like specific responses, so.
Alright. Thank you. Good.
Alright. Looking forward to hearing more as we progress. Thank you, that's very comprehensive, what you've done, what your committee's done, what the district has done.
The only other thing is, if all those parents do their surveys, we get more information, and we can improve the code.
Please. Another plea.
Please, please do your surveys.
That's right.
Panorama.
Panorama.
Alright, moving on.
Thank you, Sue.
We're now on to exhibit four, the proposed fee schedule for use of public schools.
So this is your first reading of this. We are not making any changes to the format, but our fee schedule includes both an incremental maintenance as well as a standard maintenance category. The incremental maintenance is for those nonprofit and groups that meet the definitions of our board policies, and we have extensive use of our buildings. We're proposing a 2% increase. You'll see that we've rounded in some cases, just to make sure that it's divisible by three, that's our minimum charge. And really, that's most of the background. I think currently budgeting for revenues, $60,000 in the last two years, not looked at and update to see how we're doing through the current year, but those monies go to the town of Simsbury. And it's really similar to past years. If there are questions tonight or for next time, be happy to try to send them back.
Are there any outside community groups that have contacted you regarding these fees, or any of them that feel that there is?
I've not heard any feedback about our fees, any groups.
No, that's, that's, that's good.
Yeah, I haven't heard any complaints, and we continue to have folks inquire about use of our space. Just had some new calls in the past month, so try to make them available wherever possible.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we are now on to exhibit five. Oh, with this time of year again.
It is this time of year.
This time of year.
I do, and I have my exhibit that is laid out behind Susan and Mallory, so at some point, you can certainly take a look. But just to remind you, there is a process for textbook adoption. It begins at the department level, teacher level, grade level, goes through committee review, then through building principal. It comes to my office for review before I bring it to you. This is the first reading, first review of our textbooks, and it will be presented back to you on May 26th for approval. And in between this time, there are opportunities, if you would like to review any of the texts, certainly can make that available through my office. So tonight, I have four content areas that have made requests for textbooks in English, Math, World Language, and Science. In English, we have two requests. For our ninth grade, English Level Two, we have a series of four novels. This is an attempt to put choice in our curriculum, which we're quite excited about. Georgia Robert is providing through the Romeo and Juliet unit that there are other opportunities in which to read. So there are four titles that are there, and there's a plaque in front of each one that you can see what those are for. So four novels for English Level Two. There are also four for AP English in 12th grade. Again, these are books that will give students opportunity for choice for summer reading, and hopefully, students, we won't have to purchase all of these books. These will be books that students can take out of the library for their 12th grade reading for AP English. For Math, we are in a series. If you remember, we've adopted a new algebra text. The next year, we did geometry, we did Algebra II, and we are at the pre-calc level at this point right now. So what you see is a precalculus text, and that is for 11th and 12th graders that take that course. I don't have any QR codes to show you tonight, if you remember. Last year, I was pretty excited. But there is technology, not in the novels, but there is technology embedded in the textbook through online support materials and resources, incorporating technology throughout. This text is replacing texts from 1993, 2000, and 2005. So certainly appropriate to bring that forward. In World Language, we have two requests for textbooks. In French, we have not utilized a text in our French course, early courses, so this is a new text that we're looking for. This was a year-long process that involved our French and Spanish teachers. The second request is in Spanish for Level One and Level Two, all the way to the point where we had the textbook company, in this room actually, one came in the morning, demonstrated to a committee of teachers, and then again, in the afternoon, a second text, and we did that for the Spanish and the French. So two textbooks, for French one and Spanish one, which we will be coming forward, obviously, as we get into French, too. This will be a multi-year process, but right now, French one and Spanish one. And the final text that is coming forward is a biology text for Level Two Biology. This would replace a text from 1999, and it is aligned to the new generation science standards that we are beginning to, have not been officially adopted by the state of Connecticut, but are certainly near the completion for adoption at some point in the near future. But it certainly supports, as I said, the new generation science standards and our written curriculum, and it's been a long time since a new biology text for Level Two Biology. We did do one a couple of years ago for Level One Biology. So those are all on display and will be in my office for the next two weeks, and we'll come back for a final approval at the May 26 meeting.
Sounds like we're getting our money's worth, too, with 1993 and 1999.
Just pure curiosity. What's one of those cost?
I can tell you. Which one are you interested in knowing?
Pre-calc.
The bio, the bio's the big one.
The bio book is, it's $100. The pre-calc is actually $128 per book.
Yeah.
Cheaper than calculus.
Yeah. It's just a pretty fine.
So, yeah, yeah, those are all, you know, the one thing we do have to pay attention to is the life or the longevity of the online resources, and those can range anywhere from five to seven years, and that may, we may accrue a new cost at that point. And we're getting to that point with our algebra text for the middle and the high school, so. But they are, I have all that, yep. The Spanish and French books are a little less, at $65 apiece, so, but they are expensive. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, they are getting their money's worth.
They're definitely needed.
They are needed, yeah.
Good. All right, very good. Remember the day when we used to have stacks and stacks of books that we passed around?
Really?
And then we had our economy, we've been very good about, very frugal with our book purchasing for a while.
Well, I think what we've done, and I know I've done it with Neil at the secondary level, is we've tried to be very clear, especially with the math, at doing it year by year, and so that you get into this cycle, and it's really been a good cycle for us, and same thing with science as well.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, we are now on to our second public audience. Anyone wishing to address the audience may do so. Seeing none. I know that the students and Mr. Sullivan are talking about the textbooks here. They're very excited.
This grade, it was one year behind the math textbook, so they got the last year of the old textbooks. So all time.
Mine, I don't have covers on our textbooks.
I know, you still have pages? You still have all the pages?
Running with the pages.
The current sophomores have gotten all new.
Oh, that's right. All right.
Thank you for your sacrifice.
We were talking about the textbook.
I'm actually excited about it. I was reading the description.
Yeah, aren't those exciting? So, and I put in some pretty detailed descriptions in those so that you could get a sense of what they are.
I can attest to, although we cannot see, I gave Mrs. Murray that copy.
I have my own copy now, and I'm going to take it and read it, yes.
It's nice to have the options.
Yes.
Yeah, it definitely improves.
That's a great point, yeah.
All righty. All right, we have one other business that we want to mention.
Share, I forgot to share in Communications.
Yes, and I think it's very exciting.
But a lot of buzz, I heard it on the way in on the radio, US News and World Report releases on an annual basis their rankings of the top high schools across the country, and you can go into the website and you can query it by state. So Simsbury High School is in the highest category nationally in terms of the award they receive, or the rating they receive, and is number six in the state of Connecticut. So I think in the last three years, we were 13, nine, and now six. So each of these rating systems has their own nuances, of course, and, but, you know, it's a nice, a nice place for us to sit, and among several that we've received this year that have been very positive for Simsbury High School, so.
So that's it, so, very, very good.
Congratulations.
Copy, copies.
To our students and our principals.
Copies are available, US, I heard the same thing driving in, too.
Yeah.
So I, when they were mentioning that, I somehow forgot the number one school in the state. I just, I knew that we were up there right now, so. All right, very good. I would like to now take a motion to move into executive session. Seconds? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes. All righty, our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 26 at 7:00 PM. Good evening, and we'll see you later. Thank you.